One do we get?
Welcome everyone to the Hewitt, Texas City Council of the Regular Workshop at seven o'clock. All members of council are here and declare a quorum and call to order at seven. If you please, do I mean a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation's court of justice.
Thank you. Under the public comments, the city council invites citizens to speak on any topic not already scheduled for a public hearing. The Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from discussing, responding to, or acting on any comments or items not posted on the agenda. Citizens who wish to speak must complete a public comment form and present it to the city secretary. First item up, number three on the regular agenda is the approval of the minutes for the number eighteen twenty twenty-four city council regular meeting. Open the council for any corrections and a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve the minutes as presented, but for my own for corrections.
Thank you. We have a motion, Mr. McCallie, and call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Potter. The motion, Mr. McCallie, and a second, Mr. Potter. This time, poll the council for your vote. All in favor, please show your hands. Thank you. The motion carries six to zero. Next item number four is discussion and possible action or reappointments to the Parks and Befication Committee. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Parks and Befication Committee has three spots, three positions expiring in December of twenty twenty-four. Those three spots are occupied by Richard Driver, Vernon Bailey, and Jerry Snyder. Both Mr. Driver and Mr. Bailey have agreed to serve another term. Mr. Snyder has indicated that he did not want to seek another term. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have two members, current members of the Parks and Befication Committee with expiring terms for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Open the council for any discussion. Move to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Bruce.
Move to approve Richard Driver's and Vernon Bailey's reappointment to the Parks and Befication Committee with terms expiring in December of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion, Dr. Erica Bruce. Call for a second, please.
Thank you.
Turner. We have a motion from Dr. Bruce and a second from Mr. Turner. This time, poll the council for your vote. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Next item number five is discussion and possible action or reappointment to the library board. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have four members of the library board that have terms expiring in December of this year. Out of the three, only one, Ms. Julie Holcomb, has indicated that she would like to serve another two-year term. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, open the council for any questions and a movement to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Just sir, Mr. Stevens.
I move to approve the approval of the reappointment to the library board for the term ending in December twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Motion, Mr. Stevens, second, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Stevens and a second from pro tempore Dr. Erica Bruce. This time, poll the council for your vote. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. The motion carries six to zero, and thank you for the members that have been helping on those boards. Item six, is discussion and possible action on a call next to the library board. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You do have seven-member board on the library board, so currently now you would have three vacancies on that particular board. You do have an application for Mr. Kevin Lightfoot, and he has applied to serve on the library board, and I believe he is in the audience this evening should you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lightfoot. There you are. If you could come to the podium, please. It gets pretty crazy right now. Kidding. Thank you for opting to help us out. Any questions in council?
I'll just, I know he does good work.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad.
I work with M C squared, yeah, and I know he does good work. I was actually quite thrilled to see your name on there, like, yeah, I really appreciate you wanting to serve the city this way, too. Again, I was really excited to see you on there. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Brad.
And I think he was a pretty good band member in that way, too.
That was my brother Keith, but, yeah.
Oh, Keith was a band member.
Well, what did you think? He's got better shape.
I was in choir. Keith was the band member, yeah.
So are you now at the MCC Library?
Yes, ma'am. Been there six years, director of the library for two.
Very good.
Anybody else? Do you have any questions or think you got it figured out? But Kevin, we appreciate you taking the time to help out on this. Thank you very much, sir.
Of course, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, at this time, no other questions. We'll call for our motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the appointment of Kevin Lightfoot to the library board with the term expiring in December twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Turner. Call for a second, please. You, sir? Mr. McCallie. We have a motion from Mr. Turner and a second from Mr. McCallie. This time, poll the council for your vote. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Kevin, thank you. Thank you. Next item up, number seven, is discussion and possible action to approve purchase of a John Deere sixty-P mini excavator and hydraulic hammer. That has to be Kevin Ranky somewhere in there. Mr. Thomas.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And Mr. Ranky asked to be put on the agenda prior to the fire station bid, just to get your order. Anyhow, this evening, what you have before you is an item that was approved in the budget this past fiscal year for an excavator, a four-ten John Deere backhoe. Mr. Ranky wants to buy an implement or an attachment for it of a hydraulic hammer to replace one that is currently broken. He has gone out and gone on to Sourcewell State Contract and gotten pricing for the retail purchase of this particular backhoe. And as you look at those prices that you have before you, those prices for that backhoe are inclusive of the discount that Sourcewell provides municipal clients, as well as the trade-in of a twenty-eleven John Deere with some attachments to that as well. In our current budget this fiscal year, we budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars. The pricing for the new mini excavator and hammer basically exceeds that amount if we don't do the trade-in, but with the trade-in, the total cost would be eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Open the council for any discussion, questions, and a movement to a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the purchase of a John Deere sixty-P mini excavator and hydraulic hammer from R D O Equipment Company for the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Potter. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. McCallie. We have the motion from Mr. Potter and a second from Mr. McCallie. This time, poll the council for your vote. All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. The motion carries six to zero. Next item number eight is discussion and possible action to award a bid for construction to fire station number two. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Earlier this evening in your workshop, you obviously had a presentation from Martinez Architects regarding process, the evaluation criteria, the proposals that were received and whatnot. As we come to you this evening as a staff, we're actually very pleased with the bids that we received. Wanted to clarify one thing that's in your agenda packet. Alternate bid number two is not for mezzanine or for storage and equipment. It is for lightning protection. That was an error on our part at the time that we prepared the packet. But we did receive seven proposals. The proposals that were received ranged in price from just over four point two million dollars, basically, to just over five point four million dollars. The base proposal for the fire station itself, plus bid alternate number one, which is for a third bay at that particular station, bid alternate number two, which is for lightning protection, bid alternates three A and three B are for the bi-fold doors as opposed to the overhead doors. Martinez placed and evaluated the proposals that were received by all proposers and bidders and Bayard Williams Construction LTD ranked highest in that evaluation and selection criteria for safety and experience, the fee, construction experience, references, personnel, and other factors. We also went through a process internally here in the organization between the assistant city manager and fire chief, and we concur with the rating as Bayard Williams Construction LTD being the most responsive bidder for our project. In terms of finances for these, we have, as you're well aware, certificates of obligation for this particular project. The thing I would ask you to keep in mind as you contemplate award of this proposal is this proposal is without furniture fixtures or some equipment that will go into the station. You know, with the fire department running three shifts, you got to have three refrigerators. Some of those types of things, bunks, beds, lockers, and so on, aren't included in this particular proposal. But neither here nor there, the total proposed bid price of four million two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars is less than what we have by way of certificate of obligation funds available, which are just over four point five million dollars. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We're calling for a motion. Open the council for questions and comments, please. Yes, sir.
You mentioned without furniture fixtures. You also just mentioned that we've got excess money and to see if the certificate of obligation. Do we anticipate that covering the furniture and fixtures and other equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir? Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? This time, I'll call for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to award the bid to Bayard Construction. Mayor Williams, sorry, Mayor Williams Construction authorize the city manager execute the construction contract.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie. A call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Potter. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie and a second from Mr. Potter. I will ask Lydia, if you would please envision and poll the council on this side, please.
Ben Kelly?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. Motion carries six to zero. Next item number nine is discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty-five interlocal agreement for the household hazardous waste collection with the city of Waco. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city of Hewitt participates in Waco's annual household hazardous waste event every year for the past several years. Approval of this item would authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Waco, allowing Hewitt residents to participate in the upcoming event, which is scheduled for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Additionally, this approval would authorize allocating up to fourteen thousand forty dollars on participation. That amount of money tends to fluctuate on an annual basis because it ends up being the number of people that show up on that particular day. But attached in your packet, you will see a copy of a letter to the city of Waco indicating our intentions to participate in that particular household hazardous event, and we've, as of the writing of this letter for twenty twenty-five's event, we've had about a hundred and seventeen households participate from this event this previous year. Be happy to answer any questions you or the council may have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the council for any questions or comments. Clearing now. Call for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Bruce.
I move to the approval of the twenty twenty-five interlocal agreement for household hazardous waste collection with the city of Waco and authorize the city manager to execute all documents and allocate funding for the cost of our participation.
Thank you. We have a motion from pro tempore Dr. Erica Bruce. A call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Turner, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. We have the motion from Dr. Bruce and a second from Mr. Turner. All those in favor, poll the council, show your hands. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Item number ten is discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, opting into the global opioid settlement with Kroger Company and authorizing the mayor to execute an additional settlement agreement. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You may remember back in twenty twenty-two, and maybe early twenty twenty-three, we had a couple of these settlement agreements that we participated in. The state of Texas, through the attorney general's offices, offering cities and counties the opportunity to opt into the settlement agreement reached with Kroger Company. To participate in that settlement, the city council needs to authorize by resolution the acceptance of the allocation term sheet, execute the settlement agreements, thus avoiding any unnecessary litigation expenses on our part. In the packet, you have a copy, quite lengthy copy, of the Kroger Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement and release. If you do approve this this evening, on page fifty-five of one oh four, you will see Exhibit A, a Texas settlement subdivision participation and release form that would need to be signed and forwarded to the Texas Attorney General's Office. If you have further question, in this particular settlement, there is not a monetary value assigned by jurisdiction yet. That is yet to come, but at Mr. Dixon's recommendation, I've brought this to you this evening for your consideration to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Before moving to a motion, open the council for any discussions or comments, please.
So is this, is this, we don't even have a cover sheet.
It would be a, it would be a small package upfront, but then there's the opportunity to apply for more money if you, if you get the programs to fight drugs, opioid use and stuff like that. But, yeah, statewide, doesn't matter if we don't have one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, also, you will see on page eighty-six of one oh four, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hewitt, Texas, opting into the global opioid settlement with Kroger Company, authorizing the mayor to execute settlement participation forms on behalf of the city of Hewitt, Texas. Thank you.
Thanks for reading that, Ian. Continue, open to the council for any questions or comments, please. No, you good? Anything else for you?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
This time, I'll open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, opting into the global opioid settlement with Kroger Company agreeing to the allocation term sheet and authorizing the mayor to execute this additional settlement agreement.
Thank you. We have the motion of Mr. McCallie. Call for a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Potter. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie and a second from Mr. Potter. This time, I'll poll the council for your vote. All in favor, please show your hands. Thank you. The motion carries six to zero. Item number eleven is discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with the Greater Hewitt Chamber of Commerce for the marketing and promotion of Hewitt. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The end of this month, our marketing and promotion agreement with the Hewitt Chamber of Commerce expires. City of Hewitt's had a longstanding relationship with the Greater Hewitt Chamber of Commerce for advertising, promoting, and assisting with special events. This agreement would maintain that relationship at an annual cost of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Also in your packet this evening, you have resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen authorizing the renewal of the agreement, but also you have a copy of the publicity and tourism agreement between the city of Hewitt and the Greater Hewitt Chamber of Commerce, and it's highlighted for you so that you can see any changes and or edits to that agreement, mainly those function around date and the amount of contribution. But in the audience this evening, you have Alyssa Katie this evening that I think would like to make a presentation to the city council, and you also have the president of the chamber in the audience this evening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Great to see you all again. Honorable mayor and city council, of course, we just want to thank you for your constant support. We really appreciate the city of Hewitt, and we take pride in naming you all as our main partner in publicity and tourism. So similar to what you have seen in our previous presentation, I believe that we were here in either March or April, just to give an update of some highlights and statistics regarding tourism and publicity for the city of Hewitt, so just a snapshot of resources. I won't go into all of them in detail, but a few that we love to mention, of course, we take pride in our print publications, all of our digital publications, resources for not only residents but visitors and, of course, our business community. We just launched small business grants this year, so that's actually been a pretty big hit this year. Community of support, as mentioned, we, of course, promote the hotels, the city amenities. I love to highlight our location. I think that that's a wonderful selling point for not only residents but businesses, providing member support and the new residents in town. As you all were aware, we broke ground. Congratulations, the city of Hewitt, with Kirby Smith. That was a very fun event. They did go all out with that. Their team was there, along with many of you council members, as well as the city of Hewitt departments. That was a lot of fun. So this slide is actually an update from your last presentation that you saw in March. We did actually increase on our publicity reach summary, and most of that's due to digital regional marketing efforts and then some billboards that we had along the I thirty-five corridor and Hewitt Drive. In a recap, just over signature events, the city of Hewitt does support those events that we attract on average fifteen to seventeen thousand to our parks, and then hopefully they stick around and shop after these. We need our races are coming back. That was such a hit this year, and on average, those dollars that are marketing towards these signature events are about two to four thousand per signature event for the Greater Hewitt Chamber. Mentioned earlier, these are just a couple of our publications we like to highlight. We have, of course, our rack card, which is our trifold brochure highlighting all of Hewitt's amenities. Our quarterly Hewitt Express magazine goes out winter, spring, summer, and fall. We were able to showcase our first responders in the summer. That was a very popular issue. And then our community guide and membership directory, which both publications are passed out year-round. With that, in addition to the signature events that we bring to town, we also love to highlight new businesses. So you see, we have ribbon cuttings. We also like to tie in, of course, the groundbreaking ceremonies, coffee events. These are nice just for new members especially to engage and get involved with leadership if they choose to do so, and then just another way that they can network and business development opportunities also include our monthly luncheon events, Business After Hours. Actually, Chief Christian put on, I believe we have a picture of him, a fire safety awareness program during the month of October, and that was also a hit as well. And then, as we wrap up, we did just have our strategic planning. We held that at the Hewitt Public Safety Facility. A few aspects we did want to highlight, of course, our goals do continue to include building the relationship with the city of Hewitt, promoting all of the accolades and highlighting that year-round in publications, but as well as digital boosting, managing, of course, effective communications, so open, streamlined communications here, just like this opportunity. We appreciate your willingness and giving us time on your agenda this evening. And then also, of course, we always are looking to build revenue opportunities, so we have a committee that's going to dive in specifically to industry relations this year, and then as well as identifying those key leaders and partners that are already established chamber members, in addition to growing those relationships as well. And here, just a quick picture, we had mentioned we love partnerships, so without these partners, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, especially the city of Hewitt. These partners, whether it's training seminars, providing speakers, just sharing communications and how we can help one another's strengths and challenges as well. A lot of these are marketing. They share our magazines, they pass out our publications, so that's another area where we have a strength in sharing all of our publications is through these wonderful partners, heavily along the I thirty-five corridor as well. A snapshot of our leadership, this is a picture of our two thousand twenty-four Board of Directors. They serve three-year terms. Our executive committee actually serves six-year terms. They are all returning in twenty twenty-five. And still operating with our three full-time staff, myself, along with Missy Smith, our communications director, and then Jake Smith, membership and marketing director. And then, that being said, I am available for any questions, but again, just really wanted to express our appreciation for the city of Hewitt, and we hope to continue our partnership for years to come.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? Mr. Thomas.
Just two quick things, Mr. Mayor, members of council. One is this agreement would be for two years, and then also the funds that are utilized... One is, this agreement would be for two years, and then also, the funds that are utilized to provide this funding for this agreement are hotel motel funds, so they're occupancy tax-based, so just thought I would make that clarification.
Thank you. Alyssa, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all being here. Well, if nothing else, at this time, I'll call for a movement to a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCallie.
I move to approve resolution 2024-17, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement with the Greater Hewitt Chamber of Commerce for the marketing and promotion of Hewitt.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie. A call for a second, please.
Second.
Dr. Bruce. We have a motion from Mr. McCallie and a second from Dr. Erica Bruce. At this time, I'll poll the council for your vote. All in favor, show hands, please. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. And on to adjournment, I want to, end of the year, I want to say, thank everyone in the city, administration, department heads, the people that work for the city of Hewitt. It's such an awesome job that everybody does, including Mr. Miles Whitney and Mike Dixon. Thank you, guys, for everything that y'all do. We can't do what we do without you guys. I see a shaking of a head out there. I think he threw a dart at you, Mike. We can't do what we do without what you guys do. You know, it comes to us, and we raise hands, and we vote, and we talk about it, but it's because y'all give us such good information. So thank y'all for everything. We're here late, you know, every meeting, so. I've never, in the few years I've been doing this, I've never had a meeting and a question by council that it couldn't be answered. I can't remember any, because that's what you guys do. Everybody here pitches in whatever need, so thank y'all very much. I think Hewitt's very fortunate in that we're able to provide new and enhanced services from every department, bar none. Everybody's always pitching in, working hard, and the beneficiary of that, as you know, are the residents, the families that live here and the people that work for the city of Hewitt. You guys help make everything happen, so we're very appreciative of that. And for the council, thank y'all very much. I know it's a raise-your-hand thing, but never underestimate the importance of what you do, of the governance that goes on based on what y'all do. It matters, and things can't happen without what everybody does. I think we have a great stewards of the city collectively, with everybody here, the council, the employees, the folks that are here, so thank y'all very much. And lastly, I can't top Alyssa, you covered everything, is I want to thank the Hewitt Chamber. I didn't really realize the involvement of a chamber until I got on the council years ago, and y'all not only help the city of Hewitt, you're involved with every city in the county, and it does two things, in my opinion. Number one, it helps everybody in the county, everybody that you do work for, that you volunteer for, that you assist, it helps them, but it helps us, too. And I know you know that, but anyway, it's just, it's just a big old thank you to everybody. We appreciate what you do. We appreciate the council and being up here and doing what y'all do. It really matters, so. I told it outside the lines long enough. I'm done with that, so we will go on for adjournment, and I'll call for a motion, please. Dr. Bruce? Second.
Second.
Mr. Potter. We have a motion from Dr. Bruce, a second from Mr. Potter. At this time, if you'll raise your hands, I'll poll the council, all in favor. Thank y'all. The meeting is adjourned at 7:33. Thank you, everyone.